2011 South Bend County Council is now in session. We are all risen for Councilmember Timothy A. Ralph.
Let us bow, please, for the invitation. Let us pray. Oh God, our eternal Father, we've come this afternoon giving you praise and thanks for your grace and for your mercy. Lord, we know we can do nothing without you, so we pray now that you will lead and guide us in this session, and we'll be sure to give you praise. But let us hear each issue with open ears, and let us deliberate in a way that's glorifying and by spite, and we'll be sure to give you the praise. We ask and pray in thy blessed name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the great work of which there has been one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Fordy, roll. Mr. Henry Davis enters here. Mr. LaFate.
Yep.
Mrs. Puzella.
Present.
Dr. Varner.
Present.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Present.
Mr. Kirsten.
Present.
Councilmember Ralph.
Present.
Councilmember White.
Present.
President Deere.
Present, Mr. Fordy.
Nine present.
Thank you. Can I have a report from the Subcommittee on Minutes?
To the common council of the city of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the August 8th, 2011 meeting of the council, found them to be correct, and therefore, we recommend the same be approved. Signed, Derek Deeter, David Varner.
Uh, can I make a motion to accept the report from the Subcommittee?
There we have motion second, all in favor. Aye. In the opposition, thank you. Any special business before this council? See now, report of city offices, the report on graffiti from Phil Sinclair, Director of Parks and Rec, and other members of the team, and you will have ten minutes. More or less. Probably less if you have, go ahead and be quiet.
Thank you.
First of all, John Martinez, who is our graffiti coordinator in the Parks Department, is giving you some handouts, some statistical information, and some summaries about what we've done to date regarding graffiti. I will say, John, he's been instrumental in seeing this program through. He's worked with the police department, with code enforcement, legal, and certainly with the park staff, to make the efforts that we've done graffiti to date as successful as they have been. So hats off to John, it's helped. Your summary gives you some information regarding the, uh, results of what we've done the past three months. I came to you back in May, and we talked about graffiti and said that in roughly three months, we would come back and talk about our progress. And the summary will show you that the Parks Department has done roughly 352 sites where we cleaned up graffiti. Although, we broke that down, 273 were privately owned properties, 53 were parks, 84 were privately owned public property pieces, 42 properties have been re-tagged. Now, overall, when we talk about re-tag, I said earlier in the presentation that roughly 75%, 80% of the graffiti that's removed did not get re-tagged. If you look at the overall efforts, combined efforts of police and parks, which is roughly 500 properties that we've cleaned up graffiti, if only 42 were re-tagged, that's about a 90%, a little better than 90% rate of graffiti that's been removed has not been re-tagged. So, we think that we've been successful in the fact that when something gets tagged or get graffiti, when they get out there and take care of it, it does not come back. And that's a good thing, a good sign. It's a sign that says that the workforces of Parks and Police are getting out there and responding as quickly as they can, and using the quicker the response time, the better chance of it not coming back, being repeated. So, I think the department is going to work hard at this, and I think they've been successful to date with targeting of the graffiti activity. Saying that, there's still a lot of graffiti out there, and we're still plugging away at it, and we'll do the remainder of this year. To date, the Parks Department's spent roughly 760 man-hours on this, that's almost $16,000. And I know the police department's also been working their crews this summer, they've got about a $10,000 waiver expense as well. These, of course, were all budgeted and approved by the council back in May. I feel very confident that through the remainder of the year, that we will certainly stay within the budget. My hope is it will actually be under the budget. We were successful in getting some of our capital purchases under our projected cost, roughly a $40, $4100 savings there. But I do want to point out just some features that you have there. Again, we try when graffiti is reported, and we have access to that property to get it cleaned up within 48 hours. We work with the police department, the police keep a database where all the graffiti takes place. If they come across or is reported to them, we use that information as well to track the way we go about cleaning it up, and the police department uses that information to track on where the property areas are in town. We've used the internet and social media to track taggers. We've had a few, we've been keeping an eye on. We follow their work with our work. Our crews have done an outstanding job of meeting with the community. We've done a lot of door knocking, a lot of discussions with neighbors, talking to them about what the graffiti program is all about and how it works. And I think that's going well. We've had our first large volunteer group over at St. Albert's, and they started doing some graffiti abatement for us a couple of weeks back. And we hope that we'll get more of that type of activity in the community. We'd like to, for future improvements, we'd like to find a way to streamline and process the identifying and reporting of sites. It is a time-consuming process, and some of the dollars that we spend on man-hours, those dollars are spent on tracking and talking to neighbors and getting information and identifying these sites. So we'd like to work on ways we can streamline that next year, so not quite as much time as would be required. The other thing we're doing here is creating a website for graffiti, and you have a copy there, I believe, with your handout. This is something that we just put together, and we hope it will go live on September 12th. At the same time, that the new park website will go live. The park website we've been working on most of the year, but the graffiti website is something that will have links to the parks and to the city website. So look for that on the 12th of September. And that, just at that right now, the website has just talked a little bit about what to do if you see the graffiti, who to report it to. It has the email to the graffiti coordinator, and also access to the waiver forms that we have. We've also encouraged volunteers in the community to help us out with graffiti. And is in the third page on there is the various state laws and local codes that pertain to graffiti-related activity. The other attachments that you have there, this is graffiti abatement breakdown by districts. First district through the sixth district, and you'll see in each district the addresses, the methods that we did to remove the graffiti to date, and the cost. And as you can see, each district has a number of sites, some obviously more than others. There is one asterisk that you need to be aware of, and that is graffiti efforts through the Weeds and Seed program is not part of this program. And I know that some Weeds and Seed activities going on in the first and second district, but I do not know the exact extent of what that's been done by Weeds and Seed. I will say this, that they have contacted John, our graffiti coordinator, and I'd like John to get more involved with the program this year, and possibly oversee the program for next year. So we have the entire graffiti umbrella in the city under one umbrella here, we can get it all taken care of, with the same plan. The other forms that you have there, graffiti tracking form, one form is a form that's used by co-inspectors. When they go out in the neighborhoods and they see graffiti and possible sighting or violation of graffiti, they'll turn in the tracking form that you had before you. There's also another tracking form that the Parks Department uses. Our staff, we're out there in the neighborhoods every day as well, doing mowings, either in parks or in the side of properties around town. And our tracking form's a little bit different, but pretty much gives the same information, and again, it's another example of that. I did bring a lot, I did not bring a lot of pictures tonight, I didn't want, didn't think we had the time for that, but there are a couple, I think, on the tracking forms. But I can tell you that throughout the city, there's been a significant improvement with regards to graffiti. And we like the progress we're making. John's people have worked very hard, as has Phil's and the police department, and we appreciate Kathy's co-inspectors to jump in there and help out with the inspection, so. That's it, so if you have any questions, please let me know.
That's it, we'll do, not reports will be the questions.
I think she knew.
No, this is it, we just, we set the rules before this, this report, and once everybody's been through a lot of follow-up, so.
Okay.
We'll see if you have something to.
No, 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 if you have a question you want to ask.
We, no, we set this report.
We can't have questions.
Of that, so. Okay, we appreciate that, I would encourage all the council members, because I know we may even talk with Councilmember White, because I know there's a lot of other comments and questions that have been in this form at this time, that we will get with, I would get with Councilmember White and do that, so we appreciate your input and keep up the good work, thank you very much.
One more order, President Deere. Really quick, I like your report, and I think that you've done a great job. One thing that I want to alert the council to, is the fact that we do have a situation in the whole entire city that relates to legal dumping, and to clean up these empty lots. I see the approach that these guys have used to clean the city up from graffiti can be used with the approach of cleanup empty lots, as well as illegal dumping that goes through our city. So as a point of order, and actually to even like get this thing started, I will ask that the council get solid waste as well, code enforcement at the table, so they possibly can mirror the programs these gentlemen have put forth to get the miserable outcomes that we're all looking for, so. Well, I would like to say, see if we can set a Subcommittee meeting up to get that taken care of, because as you're beautifying a city on Monday, the rest of it needs to be done as well. And so that's my point of, as a council member. And can we possibly have that with your Subcommittee, Karen, sometimes? I'm sorry? I would love to have that, because I think they've done a great job beautifying the city, so we need to continue on with the momentum. So.
I do know that we've had maybe two initial discussions on the legal dumping, so.
Sure.
Goodbye.
All right, thank you very much. Can I have a motion to resolve the Committee of the Whole?
No move.
Okay. All in favor?
Committee of the Whole now in session. The Committee of the Whole, at the time, when we meet as a committee, here are the various reports from the standing committees on the items listed under the Committee of the Whole. The agendas, there's agendas and directions up on the podium or in the railing, if anyone needs to follow us. The first order of business will be Bill Number 4911. We want to ask Mr. Fordy to give second reading to Bill 4911.
Public hearing on a bill to vacate the following described property. The first east-west alley north of Cedar Street from Niles Avenue East, 172 feet east-west to the vacated north-south alley.
Thank you, Mr. Fordy. There are Committee reports.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Public Works and Property Vications Committee had a public hearing on Bill 4911. This afternoon, it comes to counsel favorably.
Thank you, Dr. Varner. Is there a petitioner or presenter present, please? Please come to the podium to state your name and address.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, my name is Bernard Peeny, I'm a registered land surveyor, 715 South Michigan Streets here in South Bend. I'm here this evening on behalf of Memorial Hospital, the petitioner in this matter. As many of you are aware, Memorial Hospital has purchased earlier this year a number of the properties formerly owned by Madison Center. Of those properties, they have purchased two, north of Cedar Street on the east side of Niles Avenue. These two pieces of property are separated by an alley, which is the subject of this petition. The two pieces of property were purchased generally to be used as a parking lot for the giraffe building at the southeast corner of Niles and Cedar. So, as you can see, vacating the alley would be good planning, I guess, in this particular sense, and would help make a fluid and complete parking lot through all of the properties that Memorial owns in this area. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Council, is there a question of Mr. Peeny? Anyone? Just like me.
I do have one question. I was unable to attend the committee meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
I have to know that there was an issue, a miss call had indicated, and was that addressed in the committee meeting? That the gas facilities in this alley, that they would need to be maintained.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so was that addressed in the committee meeting?
Yes. Yes, ma'am. Anyone else question of the presenter? Seeing now, hearing now, anyone, President wishing to speak in favor of Bill 4911, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Anyone, President wishing to speak against it? Please come and state your name and address, Mr. Hayes.
My name is Charles Hayes, I'm President of Charles Hayes, 814 Marietta Street. We're not really seeking against it, we have some concerns that we've used this alley as an access to one of our radio towers that is on Hill Street that backs up against the vacated alley. And I just want to make sure that we can have continued access to the vacated alley through whatever property Memorial Hospital is putting together. So it's an access issue for us, not really against the vacation, but just to make sure we can get access to our facility, to that area.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Would allow the petitioner to come and give clarity on that, if there is any request, access to that alley, for his tower?
Yes, Reverend Ralph, we're not vacating the whole alley from Niles Avenue all the way across to Hill Street. Half of that alley will still remain and will still provide access from Hill Street just on the south side of Midwest Athletics there, so that part of the alley will remain open. The other fact that I would mention is that this is to be a surface parking lot, so I would presume that Mr. Hayes would have easy access across the parking lot, unrestricted access to his tower.
Thank you, Mr. Peeny.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak against Bill 4911? Seeing now, hearing now, there are motions from the council.
Favorable recommendation.
Motion is made in second to send 4911 to school council favorably. All in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All the ayes have it, the motion carries. Mr. Fordy, would you give a second reading to Bill Number 1011?
Public hearing on a bill amending and supplementing Chapter 21 zoning ordinance of the city of South Bend Municipal Code as amended, amending Article 6 overlay and special use districts by adding a new Section 21-06.03 Northeast Neighborhood Development Area Overlay Zoning District, and amending the zoning map of the city of South Bend to apply the new overlay district to an area generally known as Northeast Neighborhood Development Area.
Move in here to substitute bill. Right, substitute, okay.
All right, there is a substitute bill, the Subcommittee Committee, was your Committee report, please?
Yes, there is. The Chair of the Zoning Administration Committee met this afternoon. After weighing the proposed and considered, it sends Bill Number, substitute Bill 1011 to the full. Council was favorable of a recommendation, subject to two changes as proposed by the area plan.
Thank you, Mr. Kirsten.
We can take care of those changes now. Mr. Varner, we'll come in on page four, subparagraph 15.2. Delete 75% and insert 70%, and on page seven, subparagraph under single-family and residential, subparagraph 1D, Michael Davis, remove 8 feet and insert 6 feet, and we need a motion for that effect.
No move. For the motion and the second specifying the speculations of substitute bill 1011, all in favor, so indicate by saying aye. All the ayes have it, the motion carries. With the petitioner, please state his name and address.
Good evening. My name is John Burney, I'm the Executive Director of the St. Joseph County Area Plan Commission. My office is in room 1140 of this building. This is a proposed ordinance initiated by the Area Plan Commission on behalf of the Northeast Neighborhood Revitalization Organization to amend the zoning ordinance by establishing overlay district that will be known as the NMDA Northeast Neighborhood Development Area Overlay Zoning District. This overlay zoning district will cover an area that's generally described as Angela Boulevard on the north, Sancho River on the west, LaSalle on the south, and Sunnyside, Rockne, and Twickenham on the east. Now, the Harder Heights area is not part of this area, nor is the Madison Center area. The Madison Center area was part of the original petition, but that was deleted at our hearing in June. The overlay district does not change the underlying zoning of any particular property in this area, but what it does do is to add an additional set of development regulations and standards on top of the existing zoning district. The goal of the proposed overlay district is to encourage high-quality design for future buildings and site development, allow for development reviews to maintain the character of the neighborhood, and create a strong cohesive neighborhood image. The Area Plan Commission, at its public hearing of June 21st, sent this petition to the common council with a favorable recommendation. The overlay zoning district is a logical fruition of the objectives of the Northeast Neighborhood Development Area Plan and City Plan. It establishes a development environment that not only protects the existing character of the neighborhood, but encourages future new development to reinforce the unique neighborhood identity. Now, since this ordinance has been amended by you, it'll have to come back, go back to the Area Plan Commission for its review and approval. It will, if the council passes on this today, we'll do that at our September meeting. If the Commission concurs with these amendments, it will not come back to you, it'll be finished at that time. Do you have any questions, Mr. Hayes?
Thank you, Mr. Burney. Councilmembers, their question, Dr. Varner first?
Yeah, I would clarify, this is more from overlay, which is voluntary, to what is something that is now amended for it, but you have exempted existing homes, is that what I have to do?
That's correct. Existing homes will not be subject to these regulations that are in the overlay district. It'll be brand-new construction. Not additions, brand-new construction.
Anyone else question, Mr. Deeter, please?
What's the south boundary you're using for Harder Heights? Tower, it's 14 years.
Okay, at Angela in Molten Dame, it would go in about two houses, and then go south to the homes on the north, the backyard of the homes on the north side of Napoleon, and then go down to Lawrence. And then at Lawrence, it would go down to Napoleon, and then go over to Niles Avenue, and come down Niles to Corby, and then generally go eastward to the homes that front on the west, the backyard of the homes that front on the west side of Hill.
So if that, what if that's the new, with new construction, the house is being rehabbed at Angela, not in Dame, southwest corner, if this was passed, would that?
But if the house is being rehabbed, it wouldn't apply to it. If it was a brand-new construction, it would apply.
Okay.
Chairman?
Chairman. Uh, Mr. Burney, really quick, you're, um, where at in the city has this been done, as a duplicate? I've been here for three years, and so I've never seen this done before. Where else have we seen this?
This would be the first design review area type overlay district. We do have overlay districts such as floodplains.
Sure.
But this would be the first designed area. Now, there are some design review areas that are not part of the zoning ordinance that go through a different procedure, but this would be actually part of the zoning ordinance.
Uh, I guess that would leave me with my next question. So, what sparked the interest of us doing this, why are we doing this? Why is this necessary?
Uh, well, there is a petitioner present that will speak to a lot of this, I'll defer to them. If you have any questions of me after hearing them, I'd be glad to, but this has been a very long process that was started by the Northeast Neighborhood Revitalization Organization. It's a Northeast Neighborhood Development Council, I think that's what, I got it right. It's been several years in the making. It goes back to design standards that were adopted by the redevelopment department, or redevelopment commission.
Okay, rise, what do you hear, petitioner? Thank you.
Anyone else question for Mr. Burney, please? Seeing now, hearing now, would the petitioner please come forward and make his presentation after setting his name and address?
My name's Marco Mariani, I'm Executive Director of South Bend Heritage Foundation with offices at 803 Lincoln Way West. Let me just start by saying that, you know, on behalf of the NRO, Revitalization Organization, the Northeast Neighborhood Council, all the stakeholders, all the partners, we're just so glad to finally be bringing the ordinance before you tonight. I won't go into all the details we covered at Committee level, but following up on John Burney's comments regarding the time and address your concerns, Mr. Davis, this has been a conversation that should have been going on since 2003, in the Northeast Neighborhood, when the Northeast Neighborhood Plan was developed. And then in 2005, there was a lot of discussion, both at the council level, Area Plan Commission level, regarding design in the neighborhood, providing assurances to the marketplace regarding new construction and the quality of design that the neighborhood, all of the investors and others in the neighborhood wanted to see. So documents like this were produced regarding the quality of new residential construction they wanted to see, signage, and commercial property. So ultimately, it's about protecting the city's investment, protecting private sector investment, and improving the neighborhood. So that's, I think, a short answer to your question. We can get into that in a little more detail if you'd like, but it has been an extensive process, it's been very collaborative. I have to thank Aunt Puzella, Reverend Ralph, who's been involved in this process from the start, the Area Plan Commission staff, as well as Building Department, and Chuck Dilo has been very helpful in terms of how this overlay will actually be enforced. Let me just mention a couple of other things regarding the document itself. Since April of 2011, it's really gone through a comprehensive scrubbing. After we heard public feedback at the Area Plan Commission, we went back to the table and reviewed the document. We actually brought in Gene Valandano, who's a land use expert, who I know all of you are familiar with, to come in and take a harder look at the document. We reviewed it from 58 pages to 25 pages. As I mentioned earlier today, it's a 60% reduction. There was some concern about ambiguous language in the document, that's all been.
Implementation and enforcement of the ordinance. And I'll just mention that we've provided Chuck Dilo at the Building Department, he's reviewed it, sort of a checklist or a compatibility team. So as proposals come in to their office, he'll be able to move through that proposal as quickly as possible. There's also imagery that goes along with that, very specific. Uh, there's also imagery that goes along with that, uh, very specific imagery regarding the design, and that's in addition to documents like this, which are written on the books as well. So, uh, I think we're trying to cover all our bases in terms of the people that are going to be dealing with this ordinance every day and its implementation, I think are, uh, are comfortable with it. I know Chuck is in the audience tonight. He'd be able to answer any questions regarding, uh, enforcement as well. Um, let me just mention that, uh, our process also included, uh, feedback from local developers in the neighborhood. Uh, this afternoon, I submitted two letters of support, uh, from those, a few of those developers, and I know that, uh, I think Charlie Hayes is gonna get up and speak this evening as well, uh, in support of the, the overlay. Uh, so again, I, I thank you for the minor effort, uh, editing this afternoon. I think we've got a, a really good overlay that's gonna protect, uh, the quality of development in this neighborhood for a long time to come. Um, Councilman Davis, if you review the preamble to the, uh, to the overlay itself, uh, I think as you reach through some of those goals, I think, uh, it'll help address some of your specific questions about why.
Well, that's not necessarily why I asked that question. Um, we had a conversation probably about two months ago about neighborhoods and how we actually define our own neighborhoods, and also how, uh, duplexes, and it was over in the same area, are ruining our neighborhoods and keeping people, certain people out, certain elements out. And it sort of didn't go that way totally, but, I mean, that was the overton of the conversation. And so that's why I asked the question about, um, has this been done in any other area? Protecting the investment, to protect the in- integrity of a given area. And obviously, we don't have a duplicate of this, or this is not a duplicate of any other project within the city of South Bend. And I'm not, you know, against it right now at all, because I think that it is necessary for us to build as a city, uh, we need to be, you know, um, have visions of what we want our city to look like.
That's right.
However, I just don't understand how we are, like, so restricted to the near northeast neighborhood, you know? And I think that they've done a great job, you know, in planning it, but as an overall plan for the city, you know, uh, I, I see a lot of habitat for humanity homes in my, my district, and that's not your fault, but this is what we get. Do we get to, do we have a chance to have habitat for humanity homes in your area, or this area that we're talking about?
Yeah, I think that, um... Okay, I'll, I'll just, uh, mention as well, but I think the, this overlay really started when the city began to see so much development pressure in the Northeast Neighborhood, and it was a way to provide some assurances that it was gonna be coordinated, uh, development in that neighborhood that was of a quality, uh, the community deserves and wanted to see. Uh, so, uh, that was really, I think, one of the main underpinnings for why they moved forward with the, with the overlay. So I know some of the other folks here tonight, some of the other partners will be able to answer.
So no habitat or some habitat or...
I don't understand your question about habitat. What was your question about habitat?
The habitat is just frankly about how many of the areas of the city, and I'm gonna stay away from the second district right now, but we see, um, habitat for humanity homes being built in certain areas, you know, at a, you know, a high level. You know, that's our, that's our answer for new development, new home, housing development. And I was just wondering, because of the amount of, uh, investment that has gone on in this area that has occurred in this area over a short period of time, would that be allowed within this particular development that's going on?
Sure.
That, that's my question, because it does, it's almost like apples and oranges, so to speak, when you come out, the amount of money, it just takes the bill to have a tax for humanity home versus the nine hundred thousand dollar houses that we've seen come on board here recently.
Mr. Hocken is gonna get up and speak shortly there. I think he's got a perfect example of, they're working with Habitat for Humanity now.
Okay.
I'm gonna have Gene Valenzano get up just briefly and, uh, touch on a couple, uh, just key parts of the overlay, and then we'll turn it over to the others. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mariani.
Evening, councilor members. My name is Gene Valenzano. We had just consulted with the different names off through the two hundred and two South Michigan Street. Um, I just wanna let you know the changes that we made in the ordinance when I first got involved. Uh, Mr. Mariani alluded to it a little bit. The first draft was over fifty pages long, and if you can see the colors flipping through here, those are all the areas where there was some significant problem in the wording and some, some of the process that was there. Um, so what I did is, I guess I was the scrubber on this ordinance. I took out the conflicting language. I took out the language that's the should and the shall, and changed the should to the shall, took out the, um, encourage and must generally comply, or decided on a case-by-case basis, and tried to make it specific so it was good regulatory language that you can use in day-to-day implementation, uh, as an ordinance. There were provisions, uh, at the council meeting, the South Finest Committee meeting, there was questions about procedure and enforcement. Uh, the original draft had some references into development plan approval for any development that would happen in the district, um, but that process was never really defined. We've taken all of that out, and now we just rolled it into the normal permit process. Yeah, there may be some additional fees associated with the reviews, but here will be just the use of the traditional permit process in the city of South Bend for getting approval of any development here. There is no new development plan process. So we streamlined, uh, the process as well from that point of view. Um, so really, what we've done is we've, uh, focused it down. It just applies to new development, whether it's single-family, two-family, multifamily, or commercial. It just deals with new development. It does not deal with anything that's existing, wouldn't deal with additions to an existing project, just the new developments within the area. Uh, we clarified the language. Uh, as Mr. Bernie said, we've excluded the Madison Center, and, um, we just tried to make it a much more user-friendly ordinance that is much more enforceable and easier to understand. Um, with that, I'll step aside, 'cause I know you have other, uh, bigger issues that you wanna talk about, but technically, that's what we did in the ordinance. I have to answer any questions.
We may, we may wanna come back to you in a few minutes. We want to, uh, let Mr. Hocke down, come and, and address some of those changes that you agree.
Hi, my name is Greg Hocken. I'm the director of asset management, real estate development for the University of Notre Dame, uh, nine ten Flannery Hall, Notre Dame, Indiana. And I'll, I'll address, um, Mr. Davis, your question first. Um, specifically, there's already a Habitat for Humanity home planned for the eight hundred block of Saint Peter. The site has been identified. Uh, it's, it's, uh, gonna be, uh, purchased or transferred from the NNRO. Uh, the occupant of the home ha- has been in the program preparing for homeownership for, uh, about a year and a half, and we expect construction on that home to start, uh, sometime after the first of the year. Uh, that's the first. We hope there are more. Um, you know, to expand on the question, uh, the redevelopment plan or revitalization plan for the Northeast Neighborhood has always made provision for affordable housing. Uh, the NNRO sponsors programs, uh, both, uh, west of Saint Louis, or on and near Saint Louis, the Triangle redevelopment, uh, will include thirty percent, uh, housing, uh, dedicated to affordable housing. So there, there, uh, it's been a, a, a goal and a commitment from the beginning, uh, to preserve diversity in the neighborhood, and those are two tangible ways in which that's gonna happen. Um, Notre Dame has been involved in and, and supportive, uh, of the overlay program from the very beginning. Um, we are extremely pleased with, with the redevelopment revitalization of the Northeast Neighborhood that's taken place, uh, to date. We feel that the guidelines as proposed will simply further, uh, and, and help direct, uh, similar and consistent redevelopment in the neighborhood. As Marco mentioned, um, the guidelines have evolved to address concerns raised by both homeowners and developers in the area, and we feel confident that the guidelines, uh, now enjoy broad, broad support from, uh, neighborhood constituents, and we ask that you approve them tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other, the, uh, thank you. Any other, uh, petitioners as part of your presentation? On the petition, seeing none, all right, uh, council, get Mr. White and then Mr. David, Henry, Oliver David?
Um, pardon, Mr. Walker. Question? Do you know any other areas of town that is planning to have a similar program like this overlay? Are you aware of any?
What's your question? Are there other cities, other...
Yeah, other, other parts of our city that are planning to do something that's very similar to this.
You know, I haven't, I haven't heard of, uh, any other neighborhoods or any, that are interested in going to this level of, uh, of an overlay. Uh, you know, I think that, uh, John Bernie could certainly talk a little bit, a little bit more about the downtown design review area, the West Washington Neighborhood Design Review Area, uh, different from this, but comparable. And they've been operating through the Building Department and Community and Economic Development for many years, so, uh, I haven't heard anything else mentioned.
If they were, um, then they would just come through you, or what? What's the question?
I, you know, I, I think that if there was a, another neighborhood or another organization that was interested in moving forward with this kind of an effort, uh, they'd wanna start first having that conversation with the Area Plan Commission, uh, as well as the city of South Bend, and then, um, take it from there.
All right, thank you. Mr. Henry, do you...
Sure, um, and I just have some strong, uh, strong concerns about what we're doing here. Uh, on one, one hand, it looks like that we're encouraging gentrification in an area, um, and we're actually like suburbs to move into the city limits with our own set of rules. Now, I'm not gonna get into that, but that's what it looks like to me. Well, what I'm gonna get at is that I have, and I, I will continue to advocate, uh, for my district, and I've talked with you before in past times about Monroe Park because of its beauty, or its perceived beauty, and how it's, um, not tended to. So I would love to have that conversation with you
Sure.
on this level very, in the very soon, in the near future.
Okay.
But as we continue to talk about new development, you can see the amount of lots, the empty lots that are in any area of the city of South Bend. And as we continue to use the word new development, we're gonna continue to have new development in your area, because we're knocking ho- homes down, we're demolishing homes, we're continuing to build. So as we continue on next four or five years, you'll see a brand-new, you know, near northeast neighborhood. And so it, it doesn't, it, it just doesn't seem like it's organic. You, you understand what I'm saying? But again, I'm not a going, a voting against the project, but I have concerns about how we are going about our business as a sheriff for the whole city of South Bend, and even as you guys work with the city of South Bend on many, many projects, meaning the Heritage Foundation. So I, I'll be looking forward to working with you, uh, here soon.
Likewise. You know, in terms of the, the process too, uh, I don't know if Bill Stens from the Northeast Neighborhood Council wants to get up and speak, but in terms of the process being organic and, uh, really coming from the neighborhood up, I think Bill would be the best person to, to talk about that point, so it might be worth, Billy, just coming up and mentioning that.
Uh, uh, my name is Bill Stens. I live at ten twenty East Colfax, and I'm the president of Northeast Neighborhood Council. Uh, I had planned on coming up, but I wasn't considering part of the petition. I would have spoken in favor, and I know there's a number of, uh, Northeast Neighborhood residents that are here also that have followed this process for a very long time. And, uh, the Northeast Neighborhood Council has, uh, is grateful to the NNRO and, uh, Councilman Ralph, and, uh, Fizello in particular for having followed this process for, it's been ten years, tw- I think tw- over twenty years ago, uh, Holiday, John Fair, Holiday Corporation started this process, uh, ten years ago, NNRO was formed and, and, and was, uh, has contributed to where we have now, but, uh, actually Neighborhood Housing Services from twenty years ago started this process, um, of defining the neighborhood and, uh, through the, and in our efforts and Notre Dame's, um, housing program, um, our, our neighborhood has changed quite a lot. Uh, we've seen some smart growth, and we've also seen some inconsistent, uh, housing go up in the form of, for lack of a better word, I believe they're, they're labeled as multifamily, but they're basically, uh, eight-bedroom, uh, group homes. That's what, how they, how they're used. Uh, this overlay, uh, would help, um, that from, prevent, would prevent that from happening, or at least, or at least, uh, make more compatible with, uh, the neighboring houses. Um, I don't know, maybe I'd just, rather than have a, a number of other residents stand up, I don't know, I, I know we've got some board members that they'd like whoever is here that would be in favor of it, uh, residents, if they could stand up, I guess, uh, would be helpful. And I think, uh, Marguerite will definitely wanna talk at some point. Anyway, if there's any other questions, uh, you have for me, um...
Well, thank you, Mr. Steve. I'd like to tell you, I'm usually a part of the streets, of the, of the streets.
No, you're not, but I, I do wanna stick, uh, in favor. My name is Marguerite Taylor, and I actually come to you today as a resident of the Northeast Neighborhood. I am an officer of the NNRO. I am also an officer of the, uh, MNC. Mr. Davis, if I'd like to really give you a tour of my neighborhood, we have tons of, um, habitat housing in our neighborhood. As a matter of fact, on North Fransa Street seven thirty-seven, they've built a habitat house that doesn't look, it's the first one I've seen in the city that doesn't look like a habitat house. It actually looks like a four-square. But what we, for, for more than thirty years, we have not had one new house built in the Northeast Neighborhood. Not one private developer built a house in the Northeast Neighborhood. And then through the city's efforts, the NNRO, the Northeast Neighborhood, which is the oldest continuing meeting, uh, neighborhood group in the city, there was plenty, it made me, of residential input into this overlay district, of which I was a part of. When they first put that document out, fifty-some pages, I printed it off, and I couldn't really understand it, and there was too many, too much nebulous stuff going on in it. And you were smart enough to say, go back and fix it. And we did. We went back to fix it, and I think all of us now can understand what the document is. New construction only, new construction. We have the, we have the neighborhood with the largest amount of students, all campus students living in our neighborhood. I live on Corby. And when I lived, moved there, there are five houses in front of me. They were all homeowners. Now four to five houses are neighborhood rentals, uh, student rentals, and one of them is just a rental. What we're trying to stop is stuff being built that doesn't fit. We got ugly apartments on Notre, on South Bend Avenue. We got two ugly houses that look like, I don't know what, they, they just ugly. So people just come in because it's the, it's the place to be. It's the neighbor, it's the new granger. So they come in and put up stuff, and then they leave. They don't live in our neighborhood. I live there. I've lived there my entire life, and that's almost as old as Reverend Ralph's. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Council members, any question of those who have come and spoke as presenters? Uh, Mrs. Fizello, I'm sorry, I told you before.
Is that all right? Okay. Thank you. Um, the Northeast Neighborhood is an old, very diverse neighborhood, has always been in every way there is to be. And, uh, one of the ways is financial ability. I mean, there, there have always been, not just now. There have always been, for example, uh, professors at Notre Dame who wanted to live in the Northeast Neighborhood, maybe had more money than a lot of other people, but, uh, wanted to live there and wanted to be a part of it. And so it's always been, even in people's ability to pay, a very diverse neighborhood. And when, uh, the programs began, uh, that, where the housing was changed a little bit, and particularly when it became clear that a lot of people were coming into the neighborhood kind of, uh, just for a fast buck. I mean, they saw money there, they saw the opportunity to make fast money, and they didn't worry very much about what they were building, and didn't try to match what was already there at all. Notre Dame and their housing did try to match whatever was, what was already there in that neighborhood, uh, maybe for a few more dollars, but it didn't match up, and it looked like the neighborhood had had been largely. Uh, and so when we first put together the overlay, um, it, it concerned everybody. Everybody who went for a building permit had to follow the rules of the overlay. And I was particularly concerned about that, because many of the people who had perfectly fine houses in the Northeast Neighborhood could possibly not afford to add on the way the overlay insisted that they do. And so first, uh, we took all residential out of it, and then it became clear from, like Marguerite was saying, uh, with some of the things that were going up, that we really wanted to include residential. So we just did not include, uh, existing residential. And, uh, that will help the people who already live there to make sure they stay there and can afford to do what they want. to make sure they stay there and can afford to do what they want to do to their homes. So that's very important. Um, so I'm very pleased with the overlay and, and hope the council will look for it. I live, I live in the overlay area, in spite of what Marguerite says often that I don't. Uh, but, but, uh, anyway, I, I think it's a good program and it will help the Northeast Neighborhood.
Okay, Mr. Sodaro, anyone else in the council have a question or comment? Alright, can anyone present wishing to speak in favor of, uh, this bill? Please come forward, state your name and address. Favor of substitute bill ten eleven.
Uh, my name is Charles Hayes, I'm the managing partner of Five Corners, I'll see you this time. Uh, not to be confused with the Tower Company. Uh, but, uh, we own, Five Corners, I'll see, owns three of the five corners, Notre, Notre Dame, and the other two. So we're, uh, looking forward to participating in the development of this neighborhood. In fact, hopefully I will be a resident of neighborhoods when the Triangle, uh, uh, property suffers, uh, the kite development opens up for a single family. So both as a future resident and as a future developer participant, I would like to speak in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of substitute bill ten eleven? Anyone else? Anyone present wishing to speak against substitute bill ten eleven? Please come to the podium, sir, state your name and address.
Hello, my name's Wayne Curry. Anyway, my name's Wayne Curry and I live at the ten fifty Burns Avenue. Um, I am currently, a current resident of this, um, area and in the Triangle and I am one of the people along with my neighbor who lives in Habitat, uh, for Humanity House, who the N N R O was currently trying to gentrify and kick out of our neighborhood. Um, these guidelines were part of the reason our homes weren't allowed to stay because they don't match the current, uh, guidelines. Back in two thousand, I know there was discussions on leaving our homes, uh, over the years. I'd say the interest in our neighborhood is actually simply because, um, in a document that I read that, uh, the Northeast Neighborhood is like the gateway into the Notre Dame's campus and it, having, um, been run down, uh, according to the document, uh, has a negative impact on the perception of the University of Notre Dame. And their goal was actually clean up the gateway to the university, as well as them wanting to, um, come up with a campus town setting so that they can become a top ten university, um, in the world. But there's nothing wrong with his goals, there's nothing wrong with that at all. But when you actually make the guidelines, shall we say, ordinances and force people to build more expensive homes, what you are doing is pushing the poor and average folk out of the neighborhoods and making room for the wealthier folks. Now, if they're going to pass guidelines like this, they ought to pass them for the entire city, not just a neighborhood. This is not just, uh, allowing just all the wealthy people to live around Notre Dame. If you're going to pass these guidelines, let's make them for the whole entire, um, area. Some other things that I think you might, uh, see unintended consequences to this. They say it's for new home construction only. Now, what if you have a current, uh, house and it burns down or a tornado comes along and takes it? Now you have to build that home up, uh, new again, which will be a new home construction, I'm going to guess, and you have to use these guidelines. I would say that every person in this neighborhood has the potential having their insurance premiums increased with these guidelines if they're passed as well. So there's some other questions we have to, I think, think this through a little more and how it will impact those of us who do live here if there was a catastrophe or disaster happens to our homes, how that's going to impact our insurance coverages, um, if we would actually, you know, but these are some things to, to put out there. Other, other things I saw in, in the document was like requiring porches to be twenty-four to forty-eight inches off the ground. Um, realizing that, that may look nice, but let's say you have a handicapped person who wants to build a house in our neighborhood, um, the higher the elevation of the porch, you have to have one foot per every inch of rise on the elevation. That would require like a forty-eight foot ramp for this person to get in their home. So I think there are certain, I think, I would say, um, instances where you actually would actually want to allow these guidelines not to be followed. Um, I've read in here that these guidelines are first and foremost, nor, and over any other South Bend guidelines that are. So I don't see anything in it for handicapped people, I don't see any, any discussion on what it may do to our insurance premiums. And I also don't believe it's fair, um, for others to actually impose building standards on property that they don't own. If you have a subdivision and you don't own the property and you want to build to have covenants in that subdivision, there's nothing wrong with you saying, "If you want to build here, this is what you have to do." But to go out there in a whole part of the city and say every single empty lot out here, you have to build our way even though we don't own it, I think it's highly unfair and, uh, I think it violates our property rights as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Anyone else present wishing to speak against, uh, bill, substitute bill ten eleven? Alright, we're going to have the petitioner come and give five minutes while we rebuttal on the, uh, on the negative, uh, report. The clock is ticking, gentlemen. No rebuttal? Alright, Dr. Byron's got a question, he won't, you don't want to rebuttal, but he's going to ask a question regarding that question.
Yeah, what, what I, I think a couple of those are, are good questions, uh, with Mr. Curry's agenda. One is, you know, how does that affect someone who is handicapped? Do they need to, or what requires you to have a, an elevator installed at your home, which of course makes-
Well, I, there's another one, I'm sorry.
In event of a, uh, in event of a fire or of a, uh, tornado or the loss of a home with a casco damage to it, will that existing lot, in a rebuild, be subject to these regulations? I think the classification of the paracord, we probably should get that.
Okay. I think, I, I may need to con, uh, convene with some of my colleagues, but I think in terms of the, uh, you know, the question of a handicap issue, there's a variance process that's still pending that. So if there's a question of hardship, uh, from anybody there, that can certainly be brought to the attention of the Board of Zoning Appeals and can be a conversation and a remedy, uh, brought forward for dealing with that.
Thank you, sir.
Just to touch on the question about, uh, if there's a fire or destruction of a home from tornado or whatever, do the provisions in the zoning ordinance that deal with, uh, the nonconforming use provisions, that would deal with the reconstruction or reestablishment of a use after damage or destruction would probably control in that circumstance? And that house could be reconstructed based on those provisions without necessarily having to follow the initial, uh, requirements of the overlay because those would be reconstruction after destruction as opposed to new construction.
How clear is that?
Uh, I have, I have the language in front of me to go look at, I'm pretty confident that that is how the ca- the case would be because that talks about a reconstruction after damage or destruction. So if you can prove that there was a fire that, that destroyed the house, so it's reconstruction after fire or tornado, I think those are going to be pretty obvious tests that you can pass as opposed to new construction from the get-go where somebody would buy a house, tear it down and start over.
Does anyone have the language?
We don't seem to have a copy of the whole zoning ordinance here.
Pardon me?
Well, you're talking about the overlay or the full- I'm talking about there's a provision in the full zoning ordinance for the City of South Bend, there's a whole chapter on nonconforming uses that talks about reconstruction after damage or destruction as a result of fire or tornado or natural disasters. I think those provisions, in the case you were asking about if the house burned down, would control and say that you can rebuild that house to the standard that was at before without having to comply with the new di- new standards of the overlay district.
At the same time, it says that these standards supersede all, not that-
Right, that's the whole thing, yeah.
Because if the language says these supersede all-
But this talks, it, it does, but it does so for new construction. My point would be, wouldn't it be considered new construction? It would be considered reconstruction after-
What'd you say?
Fire or fire or natural disaster. So I think that's how it would fall into a different category.
So it would require interpretation of the building, but aren't they, uh, covering all the areas? Yes, after you would call on that, right, in a specific, you know, language, clarify instruction.
I believe that's correct.
Which, they could, we, we, they could come back and say that that is new construction. They have that option, isn't that correct?
The building department, what?
Um, their interpretation, does they know their interpretation?
There is, there is going to be a fact situation depending on each individual project that would come up like that. I guess you could always question whether the fire was intentionally set or was it accidental fire or something like that, but, but again, if, yes, it's going to be a case by case interpretation that the building commissioner will have to make to say, "Do you fall under the provisions of reconstruction or is this new construction?"
My thanks, sir.
If I'm there, on page two, under, uh, section B four, it still allows for a special exception move to come before the, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals and the county council. I mean, you could still go that route if you needed the handicap ramp.
Yes, but, uh, now, I wasn't trying to deal specifically with the handicap situat-
Or even with a burned down house if you-
The variance process that's available throughout all the zoning ordinances is still available to this district. So if there's a situation where the ramp is going to violate a setback or a height issue or something like that, those can be dealt with through the variance process. That would definitely be a hardship, uh, and it's something that should be able to be taken care of. Special exception process is a slightly different animal, it talks about uses, but yes, that is available, uh, in this district. All those relief net valves that are built into zoning are still going to be there. Yes, sir.
Very good, I have a question for you. If this is so good for this particular district, why isn't it good for all districts in the City of South Bend?
Sir, I only came in, I was asked to come in to rewrite our order to-
Someone in your presentation, make that. I'm Mark. I said, is this so good for that particular district, right? Why is this not something that could be applied throughout those either?
I think it could. Uh, I think it would be, uh, you know, a question that, uh, neighborhoods could look at across the city. And I think that Jean could even speak to the question of the whole update to the zoning code that was completed many years ago, uh, and some of the conversation that occurred there. So I think that this is specific to this neighborhood at this time because of, as I mentioned earlier, what the neighborhood has been experiencing and expects to experience. Uh, so it's a, it's a place where you're seeing additional new development and again, there was wanting to be some control on that new development, uh, to assure that a certain quality of development was maintained in that neighborhood.
I begin with his name, but that's not the only regarding what I've heard out here, but that's not the only area the cities have had some issues. And so my concern is that if, um, you just put it out in one area, I'm just concerned if that sticks to other areas.
Well, you know, it might be a, a conversation for the zoning administration committee to talk about that, uh, on a citywide level and to talk about it from the entire zoning code perspective. Um, I, you know, I can't speak to that, but I think it's a larger conversation that you need to have about the existing code and, you know, what you want to see in the city.
Alright, now, does anyone else have a question related to, uh, ten eleven? I understand your question. Mr. Bernie, you want to come in, Mr. Davis?
Well, I, I might just address, this, this Mr. Davis's question.
Okay.
Um, it might be that every neighborhood in South Bend should have its design criteria, but not necessarily these design criteria. I think that the criteria needs to come from the neighborhood residents, what they envision their neighborhood to look like. For instance, the commercial here that you'll see will be very similar to any street commons. You wouldn't necessarily want to see that along Ireland Road. That's a different type of commercial area. So you probably don't want to take these, uh, guidelines as they exist today and apply them everywhere in the city. But it might be a good idea if the neighbors want guidelines that reflect their neighborhood, that the city adopt those guidelines.
I appreciate your answer on that.
Thank you, Mr. Bernie, Mr. Davis, Henry Davis.
Sure, uh, is there, has there been a projected population growth for that area or for the next seventy-five or ten years? And so what is it? Because we're doing a lot of building. Uh, it's, it's just a question, uh, it's for my information actually, but... Well, I was wondering if there was a projected population growth for that area. We've done a number of like condominiums, uh, there's student housing over there. There's a lot more apartment buildings as well that's in over there. And, and I'm, I'm asking for a reason.
Hey, you know, I haven't seen any projections or any market studies from any local development, I'm sure they exist. And maybe it's something that, uh, some of the developers in the room might be able to answer, but I haven't seen any projections for the Northeast Neighborhood or certain census tracts for the next five to ten years. I haven't seen that.
Okay. It was, I, I think it is germane to what we're talking about because we're trying to see where the markets are going and where the values are going to be at and where the actual new population is going to be at. And it has everything to do with what we do up here, so that's why I was asking.
Sure.
Mr. Davis, I have one more question.
Regarding, um, Mr. Curry's question regarding handicap, um, ADA issues and, um, the storm issues and twenty- is there any way, I mean, I know that we have a special exception and I know we have the other, um, traffic intersection that can go through all of that, but in the event of those kinds of things, I mean, those are real issues that can happen. Is there any way that that can be pertinent to the side of our ordinance without, without having to go through that whole kind of process?
No, I, I, I would imagine so, it's the council- With your attorney and, you know, it could be, I don't know how you make that point, but that, uh, some additional language be added to the, maybe in the preamble, talking about control between the existing ordinance and the overlay in those particular instances. I think Chuck Beal was going to make, was going to come up and make a couple of comments on that from his perspective, so.
I think I understand what he made. Is that damage, is that something that could be covered? People don't have to go through another test to do something like that, I don't know.
Let me make sure I understand, Mr. Davis's question. I think he's asking us, our, uh, parliamentarian, our attorney, to consider a, another amendment to this bill, this substitute bill, that would, um, specifically address the issue of reconstruction due to those, uh, conditions such as a tornado or storm or natural disaster or fire. I think the question that you're raising is, can that be amended? Can a bill be amended to address those things?
And, and ADA.
It's my understanding, I would agree with, uh, Jean that the variance process with regard to hardship is dispelled out in the ordinance. I can get the code book and, uh, if no one has it in the room, I'd be glad to get it while you get other opinions from Mr. Bernie, but I believe the process is set forth with regard to variance.
I'm coming for those particular ones, can it be?
And the examples that were given with regard to a, uh, uh, disaster, uh, whether it be by fire or, uh, uh, Mother Nature or with regard to handicapped, uh, disabled, uh, situations, those all clearly fall within the variance process right now.
So your answer is, if there is not necessary to amend the bill-
I don't, I don't believe it is, but again, there's going to be continued comment and I'll get the folks to make sure.
Now, I'm just talking about, we, we seem to be, uh, looking at handicap ramps right now.
Uh-huh.
The only time you're going to be faced with a variance would be for brand new construction. Again, again, if, if, uh, Ann's home, for instance, if she needs to put in a handicap ramp, that will not come, come under the guidelines because her home exists.
No, I'm coming for brand new homes. I'm, I'm, I, I recognize that, but I'm talking about is there any way that that can be expedited since those, uh, issues that could be out there, we have an aging population and not everybody is aged and you have to deal with it, and, and you have to go with anybody. So is there any way that's expedited to deal with that?
I, I, I think they have to go through the variance procedure, but I'm not sure, um, you know, that, that would be a normal part of, of building. You, when, when you build, you, you have to meet certain standards anyway. Now, this would, would be extra standards. Um, I, I, I don't think that is an onerous, necessarily an onerous standard. I think it'd be very difficult to say, "Well, in this circumstance, you don't have to meet it. This one you have to go for variance." I don't know that that would be a, a legal, uh, way to do things, eh?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bernie.
Sure.
Uh, any other council member question or question?
If I could, if I could suggest Mr. Davis's question beginning with Mr. Beal because I'm sure you get this on a day by day basis right now with regard to the processes part of variance.
Yes, uh, we're talking about a couple of issues here. Uh, I know there's the concern about the handicap accessibility ramps for new construction. Uh, when push comes to shove, it's going to come down to me as to my interpretation in terms of design review because that's what this is, it's a design review difference that is now part of the ordinance. So I have some form of discretion. If someone comes in, I have a, a beautiful ramp designed for their, uh, front porch and it's, it's not, you know, too ornate and keeps somewhat in, uh, in the style of the neighborhood and what the other requirements are, uh, I'm going to use my own discretion and allow it. I mean, it's only common sense, I'm not going to stand in the way of, of, uh, somebody coming into the neighborhood who has, uh, uh, disabilities. Um, the other issue that was brought up was, uh, it goes to legal nonconforming. Uh, there is a section in the, uh, in the zoning ordinance, uh, unfortunately, I don't have a copy of it in front of me, but there is a section that deals with- but there is a section that deals with, uh, uh, damage or destruction. And it relates to a fifty percent, uh, threshold. So, if you damage more than three, fifty percent of your home or if your home was damaged by, uh, more than fifty percent through storm, uh, fire, flood, whatever, uh, you are then required, uh, to bring that, that building up to the current standard. You essentially lose your non-conforming status. So, that, this brings us back to the relationship of the overlay district, design district, and what kind of influence that has on the underlying zoning district. Now, in the, in the, uh, in the overlay district, it indicates that that will trump the underlying district. But once again, we have to use some kinda common sense in this. Uh, if, if something is, uh, say, an, an existing home that is destroyed and has to be rebuilt, I think the, in that instance, the home, the structure would have to conform to the underlying zoning, but the actual design would be grandfathered.
With all due respect to your common sense, if something happens to you or you're not here and somebody else has to replace you, is there anything that could be, um, something for debate? And the issue that, uh, we're trying to share here, as I can present by Mr. Perry, is there something something put in more writing to strengthen that common sense so it becomes practical and written sense that is not just based on somebody's interpretation on that? Because you just hit the fifty percent issue and that is a key issue. That, that then turns the whole thing into an immediate issue and then it would definitely be a change. So, that was why I was trying to say that some of those things be put into an amended, uh, issue so we would have some keep things.
That's all. Yeah, I think that's, that's a sensible approach and it could be something as simple as saying it must comply with ADA standards.
That's as simple as I thought that really would be as simple as that, but, uh...
It's like to say that under the, uh, variance provisions, uh, section twenty-one and nine point zero-three, it specifically provides that any strict application of the terms of the ordinance which would result in practical difficulties for the use of the property is, is a warrant for a variance. So, that is again, a safety net that's already built into the current code.
See, with the fifty percent issue that he just raised?
That's another section, but he did quote it correctly.
Pardon me?
He did quote it correctly. This is an addition to. What do you think, Dan?
Well, well, with regard to the ramp, a person, whether, whether it's a new house or whether it is a, an existing house that has damage done to it, you have to think something in the form of a ramp that is outside. You're saying that there's, there's enough discretion involved that in one way, shape or form, a ramp is going to appear. Or you'll, you'll see that a ramp is provided or access is provided to a ramp or variance is given. And what leaves up in the air is the rules by which that ramp must be constructed. Is that still a subject of interpretation, if I'm taking?
Well, if the ramp would be constructed to the ADA guidelines, which are very specific.
Which, which refers to the, the, the grade of the ramp and the railing.
Exactly.
But it doesn't say anything about how decorated it must, must not be.
No.
And so, ADA would be the maximum standard?
Yeah, ADA, ADA standard would be the minimum.
For the minimum. So, then, would you, would your interpretation make it more?
No, I would, I would go with the ADA standard if that was accepted.
Well, if that is acceptable, then we're back into the council board, just the ADA would be.
So, by my discretion, I would, I would use the ADA as a minimum requirement.
I would, but if you go for the question, if someone was reasonable to you or the request from somewhere, at least it's needed to be given.
Okay, I'd like to know for a favorable recommendation of substitute bill. Is there a second?
No, as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and properly seconded. Uh, the substitute bill ten eleven has amended. All in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Afo. One nay. Any more nays?
Nay.
Couple nays. But the ayes have it. The substitute bill has amended, goes to full council favor.
I'd like to make a motion to continue indefinitely eighteen eleven.
There's a second. Motion made and properly seconded, continuing indefinitely of eighteen eleven. All in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Afo. Ayes have the motion carried. Mr. Fordy, would you give, uh, second reading to Bill forty-eight eleven?
Public hearing on a bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter four of the South Bend Municipal Code to revise provisions for licensing of taxi cab companies, vehicles and drivers. Is there a motion to hear substitute version?
Second, second.
Second substitute version.
Motion is made and properly seconded, uh, all in favor.
Aye, aye, aye.
All, all afo, or the ayes have it, substitute bill, second amendment shall be, uh... Is there a committee report? No recommendation from the committee, right?
Yes.
Mr. Fordy, uh, with the position president.
Good evening, um, common council members. My name is Anne Carol Nash. I'm an assistant city attorney, um, with an office on the fourteenth floor of this building. I, I spoke at length during the, um, committee hearing and so I, I promised not to speak quite that long, but I thought I would put in front of you just a couple of, uh, parts of my PowerPoint.
That's a sound, uh, too.
Well, yeah, we, um, we identified three goals that we would like to, uh, meet with this ordinance. Safety for passengers, drivers and the general public. Reliability of, uh, enforcement, consistent service and knowledge of, uh, the general public and the drivers and companies of what the standards are for, uh, this type of service and the quality of life. We want to promote tourism. We want to encourage people to bring their businesses here, to come here, uh, to live. And we want pretty residents to depend on this service, to enjoy, uh, consistent quality service. Um, after the committee meeting, or a part of the committee meeting today, um, we, uh, discussed removing from this bill the provision for the age of taxi cabs. I think someone spoke very, very eloquently about that and, uh, it certainly made sense that we would no longer have the requirement that the taxi cab speed, um, no more than seven mile a year goal. If a vehicle is older than seven mile years and can still meet all of those strenuous, um, guidelines that we have, then we would be able to, uh, pass that and, uh, and retain that as a, as a, um, vehicle in a company's fleet. We, um, do want to have a re-inspection fee. Uh, in the past, we have had, uh, companies not very careful about meeting the, um, appointments that they had. And, uh, we would like to, um, have, have to charge a twenty-five dollar fee if, if there's a missed appointment or if a vehicle clearly does not pass inspection. Um, one question, uh, that was brought up, and I think that was one of the concerns, um, that kept this from going, with a completely favorable recommendation, was the question on the uniform appearance of taxi cabs. That is one thing that, uh, in my sixteen years of enforcing the licensing ordinances of the city, has become a very obvious problem for me. If a, if a vehicle goes from one company to another, to another, to another and, uh, the, the vehicles in an individual company's fleet all differ from each other, it is very difficult for us, first of all, to determine which company a vehicle, uh, and a driver belongs to and, um, and then to go from there in seeking to investigate a complaint. Um, we would, we think it would be much more professional and, uh, it would be easier for the general public and the enforcement people and the companies itself if all of the vehicles in a fleet of an individual company look, uh, similar to each other so that you could tell that that was a yellow cab or a Smith Company cab or some other kind of cab. Um, I, I've spoken so much at length before. I don't wanna monopolize your time. I did provide to you a PowerPoint that summarizes the changes. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have, um, or if you would like, I could go into, um, a little bit more detail, but I'll be, I'll be glad to answer those questions.
Mr. Davis, then Mr. Beal.
Um, regarding the cameras that would be placed in the cars.
Yeah.
Um, who will have access to reviewing those cameras? Uh, will customers have access to that? Um, if somebody wants to do that through the Freedom of Information Act, is it with the city? And, um, how would that be done?
Okay, um, if there is, uh, a camera provision still in place, it was, first of all, the requirement would begin at the beginning of, uh, two thousand thirteen. Um, the, um, company itself would maintain ownership and control of that and have to maintain it for sixty days. If the city, uh, for some reason is following up on a complaint or a concern and has to ask for access to that, then it would become a, um, a, a document, if you will, an item that, uh, the, the public could have access to. Um, the provision that, um, is in the language of the ordinance to, to answer Mr. Beal's question is that it must be in use during the, the passenger ride. So, there's that, that provision. Um, we would propose to have, you know, some sort of warning to people if you're on camera, you know, and, cause I know there, there was some question waiting about, you know, what if I'm saying something I wouldn't want to be repeated? I mean, you do think that everybody should know that they're on camera. Personally, as, um, a, a person, you know, traveling late at night, uh, maybe getting off a plane and going to my home, I would like very much to know that I'm on camera and that the driver is on camera. I would, if I'm a driver, I would also like very much to know that I'm on camera and my passenger right behind me if my camera is well. I would feel a measure of safety in, in that and I, I would definitely prefer that.
I think that's, thank you, would be very much karma, but I also agree that, uh, making sure that people clearly know that the public has access to their comments and their business, which will be sent while they are in route to their distant destination. It's gonna be, um, clear that everything that they say in the car while they are riding will be possibly repeated back to city officials or to the public if you don't.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Beal, you had a question?
Sure I do. So, for clarification, these cabs do not all have to be the same color for each company, correct?
At this time, they do not.
Okay. And then, follow up to Oliver Davis's question. Do those, are those recordings going to be private property of each individual business? Are they gonna be under the umbrella of the city?
They would, they would belong to the business unless the city has to ask for them for some reason. Just like the driver's log. Each company, um, is required to have, its drivers keep a log of each of the, of the, um, trips that it makes. And, um, those stay with the company unless the city has to ask for them. And they're required to keep that.
But the interpretation of each company's attorney, whether they want to release any information, when people wanna come in for tapes?
No, the requirement would be that, that we would have access to them.
Who would?
The city.
So, people would have to go through the city? And there would have to be a legitimate reason for someone to get the recordings made in the taxi?
You mean a member of the public?
Right.
Um, I would think that under the Freedom of Information Act and the Access to Public Records, uh, Act, that if the city has them, um, barring perhaps some investigative reason, then the city, um, then, then they would be public documents.
The city is not maintaining them and having a database of them will be with the cab company, correct?
Well, it, it's safe with the cab company unless the city requests a copy of that particular tape of that particular ride. Otherwise...
What I'm saying is, in, 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 let's say, district police cameras, those are stored, dah 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 dah. All these tapes are gonna be at a cab company and they could do what they wanted to till it was time for someone to come and ask for those, correct?
Yes, they would have to maintain.
I think that's, Oliver, so that's kind of a dangerous situation where any cab company who has access to that could add some crap verbiage into a, a tape. So, that's something you're gonna have to consider. Cause I think it's a very important point, uh, if those tapes are gonna be somewhere, unless you come up to the, the SOP, uh, they're locked, they're stored, you know, someone can come in there and dump some of the copies over tapes. If somebody wants to pull some out, that's a dangerous situation, so.
That's a, that's a concern, that's why. And then, um, how would you tell that the cab company is what, what they need to be assured of? They're able to follow through the tapes, but I would say, is sixty days long enough? Are you thinking ninety days? Or how would they be disposed?
Yeah, we, we suggested sixty days, um, and, you know, we have an address disposal of them. So, that we certainly could, could do that in following up after that. We certainly could do that. They see how our city-
I know that's gonna be, uh, uh, a very concerned, that you're gonna have to put a lot of work into how you make it fair and equitable for the cab people. And like Oliver says, someone's request to get that and the legal aspect of how you guys are gonna determine whether a buddy can come in and see what Derek was doing in a cab or whatever, so.
Yes, yes.
Just like-
I would like to, um, put on the table for administration, uh, since we're looking at two thousand and thirteen in terms of cameras and you've indicated a sixty-day period in which, uh, the fair's company, uh, should maintain, uh, you know, the evidence or just the taping. I would recommend that this portion of the ordinance that we would pull it out and that we would give ample time to discuss with not only the cab owners, the drivers, but also legal and so that we can take this portion of the ordinance out a little bit further because we do have time and wish to do so. If that's, at least yours, that would be my recommendation in terms of looking at the current variance that we're discussing now.
That's fine. The, the portion is all within, um, subsection B twenty-two and it's then on, what appears as page nine in the second substitute. Uh, there might be another reference to it, um, in terms of effective date, but I, I could easily, uh, with, uh, take that out of there and then make what is twenty-three, twenty-two.
We need to look at it in the form of a, yeah.
And then renumber, uh, twenty-three to twenty-two.
We could, I could certainly do that and then Kathy and I can work closely together to follow.
Any other motion? Just like you wanna put it in the form of a motion?
Let me restate that. Okay, I would like to, um, make the recommendation as we look at the current, is this the second substitute?
Yes.
Um, Bill forty-eight dash eleven, um, any, um, references to, uh, the cameras, uh, in terms of this particular current ordinance, that we would pull that, remove that from the ordinance, that we would continue to have discussions, uh, with, uh, the fair's cab owners, legal, to really rethink, uh, this particular issue and to make sure that all the legal areas have been addressed.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, uh, concerning the cameras. All in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Afo, ayes have the motion carried.
I thank you for doing that.
Are any other questions? I'll be presenting compliments. See, not hearing none.
I just wanna make sure. Uh, I just happened, since, since you, you directed this to page nine, I just happen to see twenty-three is the one about the age of the cab.
Um, Steve, the, the document you have in front of you is the first substitute. Uh, the second substitute bill that was, uh, given to Jeff, uh, this evening makes the, um, takes out that twenty-three and makes twenty-four, twenty-three.
All right, do you have a question?
Last question. Can I just please state again, there was a whole concern regarding phone operator issues?
Yeah.
Could you please just state that because I know there are a lot of taxis, I didn't talk anything about that. Thank you.
Yeah, the, the taxi drivers, uh, have been very eloquent and very helpful in this whole process as cab company owners. And as fair request, before I filed this bill, I took out the requirement that the company owns the vehicle. We do still want to continue to have the company responsible to make sure that it has all of its vehicles in its fleet that meets the requirement, but we would still propose to allow, uh, drivers to own their own vehicles , um, as they so eloquently requested in our previous meeting.
Thank you for that.
All right, now, but I do understand that you, you're still asking that. We, we reduce it from seven, the seven years is taken out as part of the substitute bill.
Yeah, sure.
But I, if I understand correctly, you still would like to see those, uh, cabs from the company be all one color?
That is what I would, I would request, um, as, as I said, after sixteen years of, of trying to, uh, enforce this ordinance,
I, I really do think that would make it so much easier for central services, the city, the general public, uh, probably. I do think that would really.
All right, thank you. Council members, are there any questions that the presenter has asked? Mr. Dieter, then Mr. Dieter.
But as written, they do not have to.
Um, in the, the current ordinance, they do not have to, in, as, as provided here, I should actually.
There was an or.
There was an or written in that.
Oh, color or, or design, yes, yes. But we would want them to be uniform with each other, you know, that we don't want.
Again, when I started, one time in a company, as is encouraged in this new ordinance that if it is passed, they do not have to all be the same color at so-and-so company, all they have to have is the same type of decals, correct?
That, that is certain, that was not my intent in drafting this.
So that would be, here's, here's my intention of the question, do they have something?
The same, the same color, yes, but the two different companies have the same color.
Okay, that's. Then that has to be changed in the writing because the writing written, it has an or in it. And the thing is, take this, like I was sharing with them earlier, the transfer buses have different colors, but they still have the same symbol on it. So, I mean, we have one running around like, like a zoo right now, um, but.
Oh, got you, yeah.
But it still has the same symbol, and so therefore it still has our same logo on it. So, the way it's, it's currently written has the word or, so as long as you have the same, um, identification, it's not a problem, even though that's where you're at. See what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying, and I, I think, well, this is the language, um, that, that is in here and, uh, perhaps it can be interpreted in the way that you're, you're, uh, stating. To promote uniform standards and to assist the public in identifying taxi companies, all taxi cabs licensed under the same company name shall bear the same color, color scheme, or design as the other taxi cabs licensed under the same company name.
And that was or designed, see, that's, that's the part we were looking at. It may not be colored.
Yeah, um, traditionally, you know, it was, it was something that people may do and then if there was any confusion between companies, the, the controller would say, oh no, you know, the new company coming in has had this different design. Um, we certainly would be able to work with, um, with the companies, but we, what we want to do is avoid confusion of the public, and everybody knows trans, a transfer bus is a transfer bus, even if it's got different ads or different colors or whatever. Um, but we don't all know if something is a yellow cab, if it's, you know, if it's not.
Just like, do you have a question, Tim?
I have another, um, friendly, uh, recommendation. As we look at this particular area of, uh, uh, bill, I would suggest that because of the language in the or, uh, can be interpreted that if we have, uh, some type of, of design and not necessarily the color, I would suggest that at least we would give this ordinance a year to see in terms of, uh, vehicles and, uh, to see if, uh, that we could work with making sure that each cab company is clearly identifiable and not necessarily with a color and that we can come back and continue the discussion. Because the way that word, it does open that up for interpretation. And if there's something in serious effect, that we want to make sure that it's as clear as possible and that we give our, ourselves opportunity just to see, give a year to see, you know, what's in.
One, one thing I, if I may, if I can put this, this is, um, this is one of those provisions that would not come into effect until January twenty thirteen. So that would give us some time to make some changes to this, uh, to make something that everyone would be comfortable with.
That would be my recommendation similar to the one. Because we're still looking at two thousand, we're still looking at two thousand and thirteen, so just in my opinion, to fall right under that same, uh, issue.
Would you want me to delete the, sort of, provision that I just read?
Well, that's, we have to actually, have to go back, because it says it shall. The, the, the language up to there, we, the taxi cabs, right now it says may and what I would suppose, what I was supposed to do is, uh, change it to shall. Bear and identifying color, color scheme, or design approved by the central services division. We could keep that in there and then so. And then, well, I guess it wouldn't necessarily have to be, they would all be, be the same color.
The design, and I would also, because we would want to come back and revisit those. But if they should, because the, the whole issue shall or the design, I think that's where the issue is at.
This is a part of order, I thought it came in two thousand and thirteen, triggering that reason for this particular section.
That is at the end of the bill, uh, apologize for highlighting it like that, um.
But to address the concerns of our council members, Dieter and his wife, consider this as a friendly amendment to promote uniform standards and assist the public in identifying taxi companies. All taxi cabs licensed under the same company name shall bear the same design or logo as other taxi cabs licensed under the same company name.
And say out the word color?
Yes, forgot all the colors.
I can look that up.
Would, would you mind just putting that out?
I'll try to get that down on here.
Page ten.
Yeah.
Of the second substitute, keeping your language to promote uniform standards and to assist the public in identifying taxi companies. All taxi cabs licensed under the same company name shall bear the same design or logo as other taxi cabs licensed under the same company name.
Second. Can I make a motion to?
Hang on just a minute. I'll, I'll recognize you just a minute.
This proposal's a friendly amendment for you to consider.
Is that satisfied with you without the color, is, is the question we're really raising to you?
Yes, I, my only question is, um, and maybe Kathy, if you'd want to just back up one sentence there. The taxi cabs, right now, right now it would say this taxi cab shall bear and identifying color, color scheme, or design approved.
You can switch that back to may.
We can just switch it back to may.
I would just keep the color as may.
Okay.
May. And that would still give you a, a year to work, to come back.
More to work through. So all the change would be, would, would be not changing this, um, may to a shall, keeping it as a may and then that next sentence, um.
Right, so that reading.
Color or color scheme or.
Gotcha.
And if you, to, to mine or.
I understand what you're talking about.
You all right with that?
Yes, sir, that would be fine.
Motion by Miss White.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Dieter, all in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have the motion carried. Any other questions of, of the presenter? Seeing not hearing none. Anyone in the public wishing to speak in favor of substitute bill forty-eight eleven? Please come to the podium and state your name and address. As amended, substitute bill amended.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Councilmembers. My name is, uh, Patrick McCormick and I am the student body president of the University of Notre Dame, uh, and my address is two zero three West Fortune Student Center on the Notre Dame campus. And I just wanted to express our gratitude to you and to Ms. Nash, um, for your work in trying to, uh, not only improve standardization but also transparency, um, in the delivery of, of taxi services here in the city. And I hope that you know you have a ready partner with our student government and we really are just so grateful for this effort to, um, to meet these three goals of improved safety, uh, and also reliability and enhancing the quality of life for not only, um, for not only the, uh, those who are, those who are, um, who are being transported by taxis but those who are also driving them. And so, uh, we look forward to continuing to work with you and, and thank you for taking the time to, um, to develop this proposal.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of bill, substitute bill amended forty-eight eleven?
My name's Mark Elliott, I live at two nine nine zero zero Grant Road, New Carlisle, Indiana, four six five five two. Uh, I guess I want to thank the council this evening for listening to us like they have, uh, making the changes that have been needed. Um, as for the videotaping, I guess that's going to be something that's going to be put off for another time, so we appreciate that because that could contain hundreds of hours of videos that somebody needs to hold on to. And as to retrospect, as a company, as the owners, like me, I'm an owner operator, do I retain them? Do I give them to my company owners? Do I go to him in six weeks or sixty days and say, hey, can I get these bags? I can erase them or reuse them or go out to buy new ones, so thank you very much for that. Uh, for the color scheme, I guess we're not going to do the paint color scheme right now. We appreciate that because that's a considerable cost. My personal drive is two thousand and seven, forty-three fifty. For me to paint that van cost me about twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars. Um, I think that's insane. So I want to thank you again for your time. Bless you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Yes, my name is Pamela So Bay, um, and the owner of Golden Dome Taxi, been in business for four years and, um, has worked throughout the industry, um, which I love, puts everything back into the city. Um, I am from Michilaca and I do drive here in South Bend. Um, going through all the stuff that we have through the council and, and that throughout the years, uh, I'm, I'm glad we do have something that's actually going to help us, um, as far as the colors. Um, I think if a company stays within the color of the cars, like my company has three colors of cars, but my logos are on the, were required to put them on the sides of the car, the back of the car. My cars now have it on the hood, so you can see me coming. You know that that's my company. So if the taxi companies are made to do that as uniform, that would be good. Because there are drivers that do jump from company to company and I have seen them paint their cars and they look terrible. But, uh, they're either here or they're not. But, uh, Ms. Nash has been, you know, very diligent in working with you and, and us and I think we have pretty much come to an agreement on what we would like to see as taxi drivers. Uh, we want to remain safe within the city and I have seen, um, other places where they do have cameras in the cars. I have done some investigation myself, um, and there is a camera that, like the police have, where you can see inside your car and outside your car, that is like five hundred dollars. But as, um, Ms. Catherine had said before, you could get a really inexpensive one for like a hundred, the indoor-outdoor. But, um, that would require us to have a, a memory card and we can keep those, you know, in a box or whatever. And, uh, I think that would be better. And if the city would require us to, um, say, to come up with that on a particular day or a particular location because we are about all the different towns around, maybe there's something that the cameras that are over intersections didn't see that we might have seen on the ground. So, I mean, I think that's a good idea. So, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this bill, forty-eight eleven, substitute bill as amended?
Hi, my name's Christine Huff. I'm the manager of the United Cab Company. I live at two oh six Remington Court Drive North in Michilaca, Indiana. I just want to thank Shell and Ash and the whole council on behalf of our company for working with us and actually listening. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing not hearing none. Anyone wishing to speak against substitute bill as amended forty-eight eleven? Anyone wishing to speak against? Seeing not hearing none. Council members, there are motions in favor, recommendations. Second, for the motion and the second, send substitute bill as amended forty-eight eleven to full council.
Second.
All in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have the motion carried, so move to rise in the mood.
Second.
For council consensus, Mr. Forty-third, uh, forty-nine eleven.
Third reading on a bill to vacate following described property at first east west alley north of Cedar Street from Niles Avenue East, one hundred and seventy-two feet east west to the vacated north south alley.
Move the pass.
Forty. Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
Mrs. Puzella.
Aye.
Dr. Varner. Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Curst.
Aye.
Councilmember Routh.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
President Dieter. Nine aye.
Ten eleven.
Third reading on a bill amending and supplementing chapter twenty-one zoning ordinance of the City of South Bend Municipal Code as amended, amending Article Six overlay on special use districts by adding a new section twenty-one dash oh six point oh three, northeast neighborhood development area overlay zoning district and amending the zoning map of the City of South Bend to apply the new overlay district to a generally, to an area generally known as northeast neighborhood development area.
Move that ten eleven be amended as it was in the committee of the whole. Second.
And the motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition, I have a motion on the amended version of the.
Uh, move that amended ten, ten eleven go, uh, be passed. Be passed and referred to the area plan commission for further action. And, and set.
Second. Forty. Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
Mrs. Puzella.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Nay.
Mr. Curst.
Aye.
Councilmember Routh.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Seven ayes, two nays.
Forty-eight eleven.
Third reading on a bill of the common council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter four of the South Bend Municipal Code to revise provisions for licensing of taxi cab companies, vehicles, and drivers.
Over the passage of forty-eight.
Amended as it was in the committee of the whole.
Let's amend it if it wasn't in the committee of the whole, forty-eight eleven.
Second. The motion and the second, all in favor of that?
Aye.
In the opposition. Now, may I have a motion on the amended version?
Let us, uh, pass the amended version, forty-eight eleven.
Second. Forty. Mrs. Puzella.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Curst.
Aye.
Councilmember Routh.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Nine aye. Proceed to resolution, may the motion strike eleven forty-seven. Some of them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition, thank you. Proceeding to eleven fifty-three. A resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designated certain areas within the City of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as eleven twenty-two Notre Dame Avenue, as residentially distressed areas for purpose of a five-year residential real property tax abatement for John and Jennifer's.
Nine aye.
Did, nine aye. Nine aye. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. That was easy for you to say.
Hi, councilmembers, Dale Devon with Devon Custom Homes at, uh, one seven eight seven one State Road twenty-three in South Bend, Indiana, representing John, uh, Jenny, Seth, and I for the residential tax abatement for their property that they're looking to construct. Uh, first I might, uh, say, President Dieter, congratulations on your son's record in the state. I'm very proud for you and, uh, I'm glad to see that he's been here himself, and so you got to be very proud.
Thank you. Still not going to get my book.
Do you have your presentation, sir?
So, here's for the last three.
Any other questions?
Can you share with us the amount of taxes that will be paid?
The amount of taxes.
Would be paid.
Over the five-year period, the taxes paid, and I don't have the exact number, but it's around a thirty-three thousand dollar period, uh, number and then it's amount saved over the same period is almost nineteen hundred dollars.
All right, thank you. Anyone like to speak in favor of eleven fifty-three? In the opposition to that, council? Move for the passage of eleven fifty-three.
Okay.
Motion, eleven fifty-three.
Okay.
For forty. Uh, Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Curst.
Aye.
Councilmember Routh.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
Mrs. Puzella.
Aye.
And President Dieter.
Aye.
Nine aye.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to say thank you, and also I hope in that district and all where, everywhere in South Bend that we can build a home on our homes, because our industry needs it, and the city does as well.
Thank you, sir. Proceeding to first reading of fifty-eleven. First reading on a bill of the common council of the City of South Bend to transfer a portion of Frederickson Park from the Board of Park Commissioners to the State of Indiana and to rescind ordinance one zero zero seven nine dash eleven.
Move that, uh, fifty-eleven be sent for second reading, public hearing, and third reading on nine twelve and ten to the park claim.
Second.
The motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition. Fifty-one eleven, please.
First reading on a bill of the common council of the City of South Bend appropriating two hundred and eighty thousand and eighty dollars within the Community and Economic Development Fund two twelve from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Shelter Plus Care Grant Program.
Move that bill fifty-one eleven be sent to the Community Economic Development for first, I mean, for second and third reading on nine twelve, two thousand eleven.
Second. Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition.
Fifty-two eleven. First reading on a bill of the common council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, authorizing the acquisition, construction, and installation of certain additions, extensions, and improvements to the city's sewage works. The issuance and sale of additional revenue bonds to provide funds for the payment of the cost thereof, the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of such sewage works and other related matters.
Move that fifty-two eleven be sent to utilities committee, uh, for second and third reading on, on nine twelve, two thousand eleven.
Second. The motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition.
Uh, point and clarification, can we hear fifty-three, uh, bill, the next three bills together and send them at the same time, can? Okay.
Thank you. Fifty-three eleven. I tried. First reading on a bill fixing the rate of taxation for the purpose of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of the civil city of South Bend for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, twenty twelve. Move that bill fifty-three eleven be sent personnel and finance be sent for second reading on nine twenty-six, third reading on ten eleven, or ten, yeah, ten let, or ten ten? Public hearing is on... On the twenty-sixth. Second. The motion, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition. Fifty-four eleven.
First reading on a bill appropriating monies for the purpose of defraying the expenses of several departments of the civil city of South Bend, Indiana for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twelve, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twelve, including all outstanding claims and obligations, and fixing a time when the same shall take effect. Move that bill fifty-four eleven be sent to personnel and finance committee, set for second hearing, uh, second reading and public hearing, uh, September twenty-sixth and third reading on October tenth. Second. The motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition. Fifty-five eleven.
First reading on a bill of the common council of the City of South Bend appropriating monies for the purpose of defraying the expenses of the designated enterprise funds of the City of South Bend, Indiana, for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twelve, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twelve, including all outstanding claims and obligations, and fixing a time when the same shall take effect. Move that bill fifty-five eleven be sent to personnel and finance, uh, set for second reading, public hearing on September twenty-sixth and third reading on October tenth. Second. The motion, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition. Fifty-six eleven.
First reading on a bill fixing salaries and wages of appointed officers and non-bargaining employees of the City of South Bend, Indiana for calendar year twenty twelve.
Move that bill fifty-six eleven be sent to, uh, personnel and finance committee for second and third reading on September twelfth, two thousand eleven.
You.
Second.
The motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition.
The motion for bill thirty-four eleven. Uh, the motion is to continue that and send it to zoning annexation for eleven fourteen eleven on behalf of the petition.
Second.
I don't know.
The public hearing would be, uh, November fourteenth.
Yeah.
It's in Indiana.
That's what I meant.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition.
Have, uh, motion for forty-two eleven and forty-seven eleven.
Move that forty-two eleven and forty-seven eleven be sent for second reading, public hearing on nine twelve and sent to the zoning annexation.
Second. The motion, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition.
And your new business before this council?
Uh, sure, really quick, um, in light of what we just heard over the news, I, I would like to set a public hearing, uh, for, um, community relations. We're gonna ask the school corporations something, sit in with us, uh, just the fact that they've asked for a certain amount of dollars, uh, give us the full, for whole, four million dollars. And if there is any opportunity that we can discuss, uh, what we're doing with the school corporation as relation to our tax dollars. With the City of South Bend, we would like to be in the loop, so, um, can we set a public hearing for that? Or invite them, you know, due to the orders that has been set to work a couple of years ago? Uh, the next, what's that, nine twelve? Yeah, nine twelve, please. Well, so, uh, is there any update on public access, Miss Yana, what's, at all, about what's going on there? The, uh... The city adopted or set aside the, I believe, with fifty-five thousand dollars for this year. We advised through a letter with the president of Mishawaka Council and the president of the south, of the county council. In the meantime, I've heard from, uh, Mr. Morton, he was gonna take you to the county council, I'd rather they take from Mishawaka. So that's where it's going. That's where it's going. I just wanted to... Alright, and the last thing, uh, Gary, I see you're out there, I just got that quick question. We're getting jammed up on the west side really, really bad because we can't, uh, Western and Walnut, uh, still closed up. They shut down a couple of the crossings, uh, Ramby Street as well as Neese Street. We're getting blocked in, and we wanna know what's going on so we can move, uh, along our regular path. We have to either go far south to, uh, Sample, or far north over to Lincoln Way. Or fill the crunch by going to Olive and Western.
Okay, I will get you, uh, report on the traffic on that. We have opened one lane in each, uh, direction recently. Um, the turning movements, uh, won't be ready for a while later this fall. We ran into some differing site conditions. There were things that were not in any of our plans of what was underground there, so it has slowed progress, but I'll get you an email report on that from the engineers on that project.
So we have the ability to go up and about that now? Uh, we do?
East, west, and, and western.
And western? Well, why, uh, because we're, the reason why I can't travel that way, the signs are still up. Need to work. Go this way or go that way. So, uh, could we, like, take the signs down then?
We'll get that clarified.
Please, thank you. Oh, excuse me, excuse me. I got one minute, I'll... Also, uh, do you have an update on the, uh, nine thirty-three bridge at North Shore? How long that's going to be? No, we haven't seen any work on it since they barricaded it, and I know it's...
Yeah. They barricaded the outer lanes where they think the structural issues are, and they're awaiting a consultant report that's due in early September. Uh, that will determine what they do with the bridge. Uh, there was a rumor started that it was a complete replacement, but when we checked that with the source on, at Inda, they had merely put contingency money in their budget in the event they had a major problem with that bridge structure. They honestly don't know until they get that consultant report back in September. Carl Littrell, our city engineer, is, uh, in line to get information as soon as they have it. So that may be a long process. Could be.
Um, couple of things. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank you regarding the, um, Xavier School. The flashing lights are up, and I really appreciate that. Um, the second thing, from a transport standpoint, you should be giving, we're gonna talk to our general manager, the updates of the different changes, uh, the question when we came, um, for the presentation, so you'll be able to see all the, um, changes that should be delivered to everybody, all the, um, council members this week. The new routes. The new routes, everything. Um, they, um, I talked to him on Monday, because I wanted him to get that last fix, but he, um, says there's some things, so he should get it, this is a gamble. And the final thing, um, as you look at the graffiti report, um, I watch, you can see in the sixth district of, there's two hundred and thirty-five sites that they cleaned up. I mean, when you consider in District One of sixty-nine sites, uh, District Two, thirty-six sites, District Three, seventy-five sites, District Four, thirty-nine sites, District Five, twenty-three sites, and District Six, two hundred and thirty-five sites. That's a lot of sites. You can really see where we had a tremendous problem, including, um, um, up and down my street. In fact, I got flagged in my back, um, my, um, garage, and my address is on here too, so they went down. And, um, I'm just very thankful that the city really worked to do this. And so this is a big concern for a lot of the neighbors in my area, and I'm very proud to say that two hundred and thirty-five sites really hit in this district. As you see, that's combined almost four or five districts in the town. And so, this is a tremendous, um, blessing for us, and, um, it's very glad that Councilwoman White left with charge of the city and all those who work together, and, you know, we can continue to keep that.
Thank you. Ladies and the floor, anybody want to step up to the microphone at this time? You have three minutes. You need your name and address, and you can talk about anything that we did not cover tonight.
Good evening, I'm Tanya Harmon-Grimes from two six three one five U.S. Highway twenty in South Bend. Two years ago, I stood before you as you honored me as the Indiana State Teacher of the Year. Today, I am here as the Director of Xavier School of Excellence at thirty-four twenty-three North Michigan Street in South Bend. And I'm still leading the cause for excellence in education in a safe and caring environment for every child in our community. That's why I'm here today. I would like to thank you all for the lights that have been put on Main Street, uh, just north of Xavier to slow traffic down there. We need some lights on Michigan Street, too. The city once need to pay nearly eight thousand dollars towards the cost of that. I'm a public school that has had to cut my budget to the bones through the state funding and the vouchers program that has hit me tremendously. But this is a community safety issue. At other public schools, there are flashing lights, um, prohibiting, signs prohibiting cell phone use, flashing guards, and lots of other things to ensure safety. Now, I'd be happy to have all of that, too, if you want to give it to me, but tonight, I'm here to implore you to find a way to put the flashing lights on Michigan Street for us. It is a matter of not only safety for the students and families of my school, but other members of the community that travels down Michigan Street at the time that we are, um, having students dropped off or picked up. Thank you.
Thank you. I will follow up with that, with you on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Charles Jamison. I'm one of the original founders of Xavier Schools. It's kind of pertaining to the fame issue. I just simply believe that it was the job that, that you guys helped us do, and we really appreciate it. But it just got half done. We're right in the middle of a north-south route. Uh, Main Street going south, Michigan Street going north, both one-way. And we're caught right in the middle of our school building, and our children have to cross the street. There are several children who actually walk to school. Of course, we don't, we don't have school buses. Uh, there's a lot of things that we don't have, and it's due to budget. It's due to budget, and our budgets have necessarily been cut, but it was never that strong in the first place being a charter school. Of course, we're not a lot of the same, uh, budget that the, uh, regular public schools are, but we, we are held to the same standards, and a lot of times even, uh, greater standards. And we're just asking that you all would take this off of our mind and help us in this sense and to make this, uh, school a safe school, just a safe street for them to cross.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Hi, my name is Mercedes Sheppard. I live at one thirty-six Weber Street, South Bend. Um, I have three children. One of them goes to Xavier. I'm here to speak on the same two things as, uh, previous people did. Not, I wasn't a speaker, but just some basics that, um, as they said, we got street signs on Main Street, not Michigan Street. All of our walkers walk down Michigan Street. Um, I was here in the oh-nine, ten school year for the same thing. Here in the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven school year for the same thing. Now it's the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve school year, same issue. Twenty-six thousand dollars for graffiti is great. I mean, it makes our city look beautiful. What's the cost of one student that gets hit by a car going to Xavier down Michigan?
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Veronica Martinez. And I live at twenty-eight, twenty-nine Sampson Street, South Bend. And I'm a parent of Xavier School of Excellence. I have three children there. Excuse me. I've been in the third year of running. The first year, I almost got hit three times. Just coming out of Michigan Street, both pickup and drop-off. Um, second year, I almost got hit two, four times. Um, and at the same token is, I am also not only a teacher, but I was a carpool. Um, we also need speed end zones, because granted, I thank you for the lights that got put up before school year started, which was June fifteenth. And, uh, but once they pass the sign of Xavier, I mean, July, July fifteenth is, I, I'll affect you when we start it, but once they pass the sign of Xavier after the flashing lights, the truck, the, the, the cars just keep on flying. There's no end and stuff. And, um, uh, me dealing with, sorry about my voice, but I'm, um, dealing with thyroid cancer. I would not like to be hit or killed because of a, an accident. I'm a council, uh, um, carrying person and driving, but at the same token, I wanna be here for my children. This cancer didn't get me. I will need a, an automobile to get me. Where are my children? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Dan Bogman. I live at one seven five seven Tresphett Boulevard, and my daughter is a, uh, student at Xavier. It's an excellent school. Um, but safety is a huge factor for all of our children. Um, I appreciate the flashing light on Main Street. It would be nice if maybe the trees got trimmed back so you could see it a little clearer from a part of the distance away. But I would, again, like to, uh, ask that we get one from Michigan Street as well. Um, obviously, safety is very important. Um, we, there's not a lot of things around there to tell people that there is a school. Um, it would be nice to have some signs up in that regard as well, but I just ask for you to take this into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
President Dieter, uh, really quick, um, this we had as a conversation that, a public hearing that we had some time ago about school safety zones and school zones altogether. Uh, Mr. Deloitte was gracious enough to give us a report about, uh, school zones and them being updated or not updated, giving them proper signage, uh, street signage, I mean, street markings or even lights, okay? And so we're dealing with the same, obviously, the same issue. Um, I also wanted to initiate to deal with the street lights on, or flashes for Xavier School. However, we haven't carried over because there was an agreement made by Xavier School of Excellence to take care of the other two lights on Michigan. Due to budget constraints, they're clearly not able to take care of that. So, I think it's a, uh, opportunity for the council to overhear this conversation again about school's safety zones, as well as if we can find some grant monies. Uh, I don't know if public works could be, uh, have a hand in that, but grant money to take care of the flashes on Michigan Street. But also not even on for, for the debt-only particular school, but for all the schools that we have in the City of South Bend. Because it is a safety issue.
Thank you. We, we are doing...
Hey, Gary.